Okay, we'd like to welcome everyone out to our city council tonight. Appreciate all those that are here in person and we welcome all those who are watching this on Channel 17. I've asked Don Robinson to come and give us our spiritual message and our opening prayer.
I have two inspirational messages. The first is appreciation for Spanish Fork City. I moved here, my family moved here when I was 14, that makes 75 years as a citizen here, and my wife joined with me 64 years ago. So, I've just marveled over the years at the leadership we've had and the marvelous things that have happened in our community without disturbances and disagreements, just wonderful things happen one by one and our big beautiful cemetery with a lot of roomed expansion, that's planning and the reservoir and many, many other things. The second is a message from President Gordon B. Hinckley. It's an interview that he held, was held with a New York reporter and it was recorded and he being the president of his church mentioned that in his remarks here, but the message applies so much to our situation in the world today and as I look over history, there's been bad situations all along. So, he says, "I see many good people everywhere and there's so much good in them and the world is good, wonderful things are happening in this world. This is the greatest age in the history of the earth. We have every reason to be optimistic in this world. Tragedies around us, yes, problems everywhere, yes, but look at Naboo, look at what they built here in seven years and then left, but what did they do? Did they lie down and die? No, they went to work. They moved halfway across this continent, turned the soil of a desert and made it blossom like a rose. On that foundation, this church has grown into a great worldwide organization affecting for good the lives of people in more than 140 nations. You can't, you don't build out of pessimism or cynicism. You look with optimism, work with faith and things happen." I've brought some copies in case anybody would like a copy. Our dear Father in Heaven, we thank you for the privilege we have of living in this great city, in this nation. We thank you for the peace and safety of our community, for our police and servants and firemen and the city council and mayor as they give themselves for our benefit and they pray, we pray that thou will continue to bless us, that Spanish Fork might continue to grow and prosper and be for good for many thousands of years to come, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Don.
Thanks, Don.
I've been invited Isaac Vaughn to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, so if you'd like to come up here, Isaac.
Will the audience please rise? Please repeat the pledge of allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The audience may be seated.
Thank you, Isaac. It's awesome to have our scouts and our Cub Scouts come and be part of us on the city council and hopefully you can bear with us through this nice boring meeting. So, okay, we'll move to public comments. Anyone that would like to come up and address the mayor and the council at this time, just come up, state your name and you're welcome to come up. All right, seeing none, we'll go to council comments. Councilman Scobes, let's start with you.
All right, Mayor, we had, we had a vote with the Veterans, Veterans Council, which I know you had received feedback on, on the vote over facilities, nothing new really to report there. We have an airport board meeting this Wednesday, they'll be looking at lease agreements and stuff for the hangars on the, on the airport, as well as some other things that are not as, not as high as of an import at least to talk about at this time, but I'll have a full report the next meeting and that's all I have.
Wow, that's awesome. Councilman Dart.
If you read your city newsletter, this is especially for Richard. November is food for finds at the library. You've got any library finds, you can pay them off by bringing in canned food or whatever.
They were forgiven eight years ago, remember?
Oh, yeah.
Eight years ago.
Anyway, and that food is...
Still got interest.
Is donated to, that was the way. Also, the seniors are always looking for new members. If you fit into that category and you would like to come down and enjoy the senior citizens, come down to the seniors and there'll be somebody to be glad to sign you up. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilman Gordon.
Well, Mayor, it's so far the election, we have just under a couple hours left, so if you haven't voted and you're out there watching this, encourage you to get out and vote and we have just under two hours that you're able to do that. And then, I don't know if it's going to be announced, but a little later tonight, they'll, they'll broadcast the results on Channel 17 and they'll have kind of an election show and so it's going to be kind of fun starting around nine o'clock. So you can tune into that and enjoy that. One of the greatest parts of this job has been, has been the scouts and as I look out, I just want to thank you for being here. I know you're working on a merit badge, I did the same thing and I'm, and I'm proud of that program. Last week ago, Richard, Councilman Richard Davis and I had a chance to go meet with a group of scouts and they had wonderful questions about, about our community and, and it was pretty interesting to, to hear some of the, the questions that they have and so really appreciate you being here and being a part of a wonderful program. Farmer's Market has one more week left and I just want to let the chamber know how grateful I am as, as a part of that. Our family is a, is a vendor there and because of the farmer's market, we're able to grow, grow closer together as a family. We make friends every year with people and it's such a wonderful, wonderful thing that our community has and I'm always bittersweet, a little happy, a little sad when that comes to an end every year and so that is coming to an end and, and you'll see fewer vendors down there this Saturday, but it'll be the last Saturday. So I just really am very appreciative of the chamber's support and, and organization of that and what it's become over the years, because it's grown from this small event over here at the library park to now, you just see, you just see the droves of people that come on Saturdays and so, so I'm grateful for that and look forward to next year. So, last Thursday we met here, our, Dave Anderson has headed up a group, of a CPAT group that has helped us to look at different ways to revitalize our Main Street and I wanted to, wanted to just tell him how grateful I am of that program and what's taken place. We were presented with many different wonderful ideas and it's been awesome to see our Main Street merchants and business owners and property owners come together and interact with ideas and, and brainstorm and think of ways that we can keep our Main Street vibrant and, and great and so I, I thank Dave and his team and all the city staff that's worked so hard on this and, and many of the volunteers are from all over the country and so we, we've really, we've really done well and I'm really grateful for that as well. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Davis.
Yeah, I'd like to mention Fiesta Days again, we met Monday. We have picked a theme, we have picked a grand marshal, we talked about all sorts of fun things with the parade. This year's theme will be, I want to read it right, because this is not what I'd voted for, but it's a good one. Kick the Dust Up. So, right now we're working on a logo to match that theme and I think it'll be sort of fun and cute. We have a grand marshal picked, Rex and Janice Woodhouse, they'll be our grand marshals for this year. Be pretty good. They've done a lot for the community, Rex was the city councilman, very, very, worked real hard in the city, biggest thing though was the airport and also bringing in the electrical, our UMPA here in Spanish Fork. Very, very good, so I think they'll be great grand marshals for Fiesta Days. We talked about the parade and, and some of the ways we can maybe improve it a little bit. They even talked about maybe moving it from Volunteer Park and, and going just up Main Street, but we pushed that down pretty quick. We think, we think Center Street needs to go. We talked about all the volunteers that we truly have for Fiesta Days. I really appreciate the youth council and all that they do. You need to tell them, Mike, and we'll continue to use them every year. We're thankful for the chamber and what they do in Fiesta Days and, but just all, all the volunteers that truly, I mean, there's hundreds of them. We're going to try to get another group of volunteers to help us with the parade, parade route with controls along the line and hope that that will be, work out a little bit better. Anyway, I just appreciate, you know, all the people that work with Fiesta Days, all the chair people that we've had. I truly appreciate Karen and Elaine and Steve, Dale, I, they're awesome. We couldn't do this without them. They're very dedicated in Fiesta Days and they watch what we're doing and make sure we do things right and I just appreciate those three people a lot, but I really appreciate our law enforcement agencies, you know, Brandon Anderson has taken the bull by the horns and is very thoughtful of what we're doing. Courtney now this year, he's new, but he'll, he's going to learn, but all of, all of the officers that we've had with that has helped us tremendously and made, made Fiesta Days very safe and secure and I appreciate all those people. I also want to thank John Bullcutt for what he's done. The city was pretty wise when they hired John. He's, he's brought a wonderful tool to the city with SFCN, the internet, TV, phone system and the tickets, you know, with Fiesta Days and, and all the other ones. Thank you, John and your staff for all that you do. I mean, you, you truly are a great asset to our community. Thank you, a good employee. Kent Clark, I want to thank him. Financial director, him and his staff are awesome. The city's very, very lucky. He's very dedicated to what he does, he watches our budgets, he watches how we spend money, he takes care of our money. I love to talk to him because he's very knowledgeable about it and I just appreciate all that Kent Clark does. He is Superman. And the last person I want to talk about tonight is Dave Anderson. Thank you, Dave, for what you do. You are awesome. I probably talk with Dave more than anybody during, since I've been in the city council because, because a lot of the issues are zones changes and, and plot plans and, and different ordinances and, and things like that and so I'm always talking to him and asking him his opinion and, and he's very knowledgeable and very mindful of our city and, and thank you. He brings in a lot of businesses, businesses talk to him all the time, he comes back and talks to us about it. It's wonderful to talk to him. I still think the streets ought to be wider. But thank you, Dave, I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Councilman Mandanaw.
Really quick, Mayor.
Oh, yeah.
Really quick, yeah, really quick tonight. Kier reminded me that next Wednesday is Veterans Day, so if you come try to see me at the bank next Wednesday, I will not be there, but it's not just a, a bank, stay home from a bank holiday, it's much more important than that and it, I sure am proud to, to know veterans and to know Kier is still active military. I guess, when are you a veteran, not until you are done with the military or you're a veteran all the time? So, appreciate his service on the council and, and to his country through the Guard Service. Proud to know him and, and all the other veterans that, that serve from our community. Don't eat it. Brandon touched on the APA program, the American Planning Association team that Dave Anderson and a few other people are responsible to, to get here. Great meeting about downtown, how we can revitalize Main Street, how we can keep such historic section of our town growing and, and vital for our community. I think it's important and I think the rest of the council realizes that as well, along with the great partnership with the chamber and, and the businesses that are on Main Street to, to come up with solutions, not just problems. Sometimes that goes along with the volunteers that Richard speaks so highly of that help us with Fiesta Days and everything else in the city and is really the secret sauce of Spanish Fork, is those volunteers and those people that are, are not just focused on a problem, but focused on a solution and how to fix it. And typically that means some, some sweat, some work, some, some time commitment and, and I appreciate those people that came last week and, and that will be involved in that process going forward. Exciting time, Clark will touch a little bit on this, but last week we had a ribbon cutting for a great business in town, Doug Smith Chevy dealership and Doug Smith Chrysler dealership on the north end of Main Street, just across the freeway interchange, right next to the railroad tracks as we found out while we were trying to film and cut a ribbon. We had a, a train interrupt us and, and blow its horn a few times, but great business owners, great, great people out there that were excited to, to be a part of our business Lastly, the Sierra Park for Dale and, and his group, the Recreation Department, to have the vision foresight that they do to keep our open spaces and create more open spaces in Spanish Fork is such a cool thing and I'm so lucky to live pretty close to that Sierra Park and to see it be green now and, and the backdrop of, of Maple Mountain there behind it is one of the prettiest places I've seen. So, kudos to, to getting that park built, getting it up and running and those signs say, "Stay off the grass." It looks pretty good, Dale, but we'll, we'll stay off it until, we'll stay off it until next spring and, and let it come in fully, but thank you to, to your department for, for getting that done. With that, I'll turn it over to Clark, Karis, our Director of the Chamber of Commerce, to give us the, the chamber minute.
Oh, it is a minute.
Greeks don't know what a minute is. I, I do want to thank everybody here and I think it pretty much was everybody here with the council, city staff and everything else that came to the Doug Smith opening and they want it, they want everyone to know that it is Doug Smith, not Otto, but Doug Smith, Spanish Fork. Got an email tonight that that is how they want to be referenced, but it was incredibly exciting, the turnout was incredible and that is one thing I want to say, I appreciate everybody and anybody that can show up at those ribbon cuttings and I know we're having a lot of them, which is exciting, but the entire Smith family was there. It was exciting for me because that dealership number that they have is actually the dealership number that started at Pages Inc. down on the south end of Spanish Fork and that my grandfather and my uncle sold to Barber Brothers and now it's made its way to the north end of Main Street and so for me that had a lot of very, very, very special meaning. I just thank Brandon and his family for their part in the farmer's market. We do, anybody watching, we do have one more week left and it's incredible, there were three weeks there, what we, that we had almost 45 vendors, one week that we were pushing almost 50 and this week, this last week, we had a couple that they brought their cactus jelly jam and syrup all the way from Laverkin and they will be back this Saturday. The trip to Spanish Fork was well worth it for them, but for me it's exciting, as Sarah McMullen explained, checks from one end of the state to the other and that's what we want as a chamber, is to bring people into this community and let them see what it is and how special it is. And on Saturday, we saw how special it was. I want to tell Chief Adams thank you. There were no kerfuffles, there were no problems and if you saw the number of children and parents and grandparents and aunts and uncles, at five minutes to one, I was looking down Main Street and I was starting to panic that no one was there and at five minutes after one, it was like Fiesta Days all over again, but I have to say, at four o'clock when I went home to Benjamin and crashed on my couch, we had given 3,000 pieces of candy away in Spanish Fork and 1,000 in Salem and I'm not kidding you, for 48 hours, all I dreamed of were the, the sounds of kids saying, "Thank you." I mean, we live in an absolutely amazing community. There were no problems, no pushing, no shoving, I mean, it was one of the most beautiful sights that I have ever seen and it let me know that I made the right choice in coming home. I did and I appreciate the support that this council and the city staff give me and the rest of the chamber and Saturday was an amazing day. It was just very telling about this community, very special place that we call home. So, thank you.
Thanks, Clark. The best dressed costumes on that Saturday were all the police officers standing in the, the road there, so they, they, they were awesome. Clark, that was a pretty neat sight as I walked up and down Main Street and saw all the kids there and, and you're right, they're very polite and great costumes, you know, not only the kids, but the adults and so that was pretty awesome.
And the mayor didn't even take any candid, they didn't even do either.
I know, I know. Darn the luck. A couple of things I'd like to add to, on Veterans Day, they're going to have an open house at the Memorial Building from three to seven, I believe is when that's going to be, so the public's invited to go down to the Memorial Building to that open house and as you notice too, it's darker now, daylight savings. So my plea to everyone out here is slow down. We've got kids walking at night now and it's harder to see them. Those are our precious kids out there and we want to preserve them, so please slow down, especially on Main Street. I know we're all in a hurry to get home after work and we want to get to our own families, but you know, those kids have families too and we want to make sure they get home to their families, so please be conscious of that. Also, we still got a little time, if you haven't gone out and voted, please go out and vote, you know, that's your right as a citizen and vote your conscience and get out there and do that. And I appreciate all those who have voted, that's a great thing. Okay, we'll move on to Spanish Fork 101, online development tools by Dave Anderson. Oh, he's going to leave. Oh.
Chased him out.
Yeah, no kidding.
I'm going to take a few minutes to talk tonight about a unique tool that we have that allows us to offer a service to our residents and businesses and, and people that do work here in the city that frankly, a lot of cities don't make available, so you might say I want to take a minute to brag a little bit about it. And at least I'm going to start with the idea, I'm going to use a couple of different stories, one's hypothetical and one's real, to just talk about what a great service this is, so. As I was thinking about how to, how to really describe how I feel about what we can do, I, I was reminded of a company that I, I worked for 15 or 20 years ago where we produced things like this. We produced plans, these are plans for the North Park Development, right where Costco is. We produced a lot of these, just like other companies do today. And for example, when we would go to Spanish Fork City to submit sets of plans like this, ask a question and maybe point to some of the scouts here to see if they can guess, how many sets of plans like this do you think Spanish Fork City would require us to turn in so that they could be reviewed by the city, checked out and approved? Any guesses? Five? No? A lot? We, we used to require in Spanish Fork that somebody would submit seven sets of these, this is about 50 sheets of plans, and so the company that I worked for, we'd make those and we had two, two girls, they were teenagers, that we employed full-time, that did nothing but, but make those plans, staple them together and deliver them to cities. And that was one way that, that we made money. We charged our clients to print the plans and deliver them and then I'm sure our clients passed those costs on to people that either opened businesses in the community or built houses and that type of thing and, and incidentally, seven sets of 45 sheets in this case, and now it is some of you on the council that know, that before a project gets approved and before something gets built, end up seeing how many different iterations of plans? Three? Five?
Too many.
Quite a few. Every time, being printed, carried around the county, delivered, marked up and redlined, passed back and forth, that's how business was done. And frankly, that still is how business is done in a lot of communities here in Etock County and, and throughout the country. But recently, as of a couple of years ago, as, as you're aware, we employed a new service that allows us to do business a little bit differently. So no longer do people that work with us here in Spanish Fork have to pay their surveyors or their engineers or draftsman to print big sets of plans like these and pay somebody to pick them up and deliver them to cities, maybe take them back and forth as they get marked up. We talk about red lines where our staff will go through every page of these and make notes about what needs to be fixed and corrected and, and those are the things that go back and forth. Today we do things very differently and we couldn't be happier with how this service is working. So, I'm sure like a lot of people would guess, today, we do everything online to where, let's say, a builder that wants to submit plans to build a house, something as simple as that, all that they do is go to our website, they come over here to e-services and they go to building permits and they come to this page here where they're tied into this company that we've employed, Citizen Serve and different prompts... and different prompts that they follow to where they're able simply to upload plans from anywhere in the world. PDFs typically are, are how we get plans. So, all that they have their engineers do is save as a PDF. And then our staff gets those. In fact, it's Kimberly Brenneman, who's here with us tonight. Um, once somebody makes application through this system, she checks to make sure that certain things are accurate and complete. And then our staff, we no longer review paper copies like these. Just doesn't happen. We review them digitally. We can make comments digitally. And instead of our staff needing to have thirty or forty sets of these lying around our office as we're looking at that many different projects, it's all just a file on our server someplace. And those plans that, that get marked up, just like they, they used to, they look the same with red line comments right on the PDF pages themselves. Those get emailed back to the engineer or the draftsman or whoever might need to make corrections. They fix 'em. They resubmit. We look at it again. And life goes on. And simply put, it's, it's a user-friendly system. That's made life not only easier for our clients, but also our staff. Um, and it enables us to do things that not many other communities can do. In fact, I want to use, so this is a hypothetical scenario, just to, to point out exactly how this might work. I've already mentioned a lot of this, but let's say that there's a resident that lives in Park City. And they happen to be a contractor. Um, let's say even they've been elected mayor of Park City. So, the mayor of Park City's a contractor, and he's been hired by a client to do a project in Spanish Fork. And he has an engineer that's in Park City. And the engineer's designed plans for this project for him. And he's emailed those plans to this particular contractor who lives in Park City, who's also the mayor. And the mayor's looked 'em over. And he feels like they're ready to submit to Spanish Fork, to do a, a project in Spanish Fork. So, he does what we just did. And he goes to our website, goes to E-Services, to CitizenServe, to the right link, gets here, fills out an application, uploads the plans, and hits submit. And that's it. And he could do that from his office or business in Park City. He could do it if he was on a cruise ship that had internet service in the Bahamas. Um, and we would take that, that information, that application. We'd review it. Um, we'd let him know if anything needed to be fixed. And once everything's fine, we'd issue a permit and they'd be on their way. He wouldn't ever even need to go just from Park City down to Spanish Fork to submit anything. Um, people are always welcome to do that. Incidentally, sometimes people prefer still to do hard copies like these. They like to work with these. And we have a system here that if somebody prefers that, they can bring these in and we scan 'em. And still on our side of things, we, we work with the digital copies. But if somebody wants to go this route, we accommodate that. And, um, in short, it's made, like I mentioned, a lot of people's lives easier. We feel like it's made us, made us as a, an organization much more business-friendly. We're a lot more nimble. We can respond much more quickly. Um, our record-keeping is better, as everything gets just automatically logged in as there's different correspondence between us and whoever it is that we might be working with. And what does this mean for residents of Spanish Fork? Well, um, for example, if you're a resident and you want to have a home-based business, you're able to use this system. You don't need to come to our office. You're always welcome, like I said, to do so. But you can fill out an application for home occupation at home and submit it. Um, for businesses that we like to see open in Spanish Fork, uh, they prefer to use this system. So, you know, we like to think that it's one other way that we can accommodate them and encourage them to, to maybe build something here versus someplace else. Um, I know that, you know, as I mentioned, uh, no longer is printing plans and delivering them and things like that an expense for people that do business in Spanish Fork. Developers, home builders, and the like. And I'd like to think that in some way then, you know, those costs have been eliminated as, as what would have previously just been passed through to people that, that buy homes and develop here. So, um, that being said, do you guys have any questions? We've talked about this a little, a little while ago. I want to, just one other thing by way of, uh, a benefit. And this probably won't have a lot of meaning except to people that are familiar with job sites and what happens. Um, at the end of a process, before we issue an approval and let somebody start constructing something like a house or even a, a project that, um, like what we see happening around North Park, a set of plans like this gets approved. Sheets get stamped, dates get recorded and things like that. And historically, there had to be an approved set of plans on a job site. And that's what all of the work was measured against. Well, if you can imagine what some job sites look like in February, um, after a set of plans been on the site for a few weeks and months, uh, either they would maybe disappear or become illegible, illegible, or just otherwise destroyed. And that's why, again, as part of the service that we have today, all that a contractor needs or our inspectors is a tool like this. And this is where the approved plans are, are accessed. Um, some type of a tablet. And that way, everything's available all the time from everywhere. So, I know that's a little woggyish, something that maybe just people that have been in the business can appreciate. But that's a big deal. That, that has really helped eliminate confusion. Confusion that sometimes leads to disagreement and argument and, and otherwise just heartache. So, uh, again, we couldn't be happier. And I'll just end on that.
That's exactly what I wanted to say is, it's amazing how, as a contractor or as a subcontractor, you always have to have those red line plans on the job site. And sometimes you don't have 'em. And I've had inspectors come on the project and I've had the, the set of plans, but it's not been red lined once. Walked off because they, red liner, it's been the approved set of plans. And so then I have to go find them, trying to, you know, from the owner. And, and that's amazing because John can walk on or Brody or one of the, of our great inspectors that we have here in Spanish Fork can come up. And he has it on his tablet and he just pulls it up. He knows exactly what he's looking for. And it's done. And I don't, and as a contractor, I don't have to worry about that. It's pretty awesome. But I do remember Dave, back in the old days, walking in a coffee shop with the inspector and sitting down with a napkin and drawing up a set of plans.
Right. I've heard these stories.
And it's, and these are true stories. And Steve will vouch for this, drawing up a set of plans right there on a napkin and digging a hole the next week and starting a house just by a set of plans on a, on a napkin. So, things have changed just a little bit since then. But anyway, we have done that before.
Yeah. What's nice about that also is your inspectors, now you don't have to go to the job site and see if they left a little green tag or a red tag. You, you get an immediately printout of whether you passed or failed. So, I can be driving down the road in sixty miles away and I can look and say, "Yeah, we passed." And I can call the other subs and tell them to get on the job.
Or see exactly what needs to be fixed.
I never see the failed ones. It's always the passed ones. But, but you talk about this, this was, and I, I don't want to belabor the point, but, uh, I had a sad experience. I really appreciated what our city does. Because I went to, uh, a city and I won't name 'em since they've already been named tonight. And, uh, I'll tell you what, what a fiasco. I had to go back three times and they only looked at the plans from eight to ten in the morning, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And that was the only time they looked at 'em. So, yeah, it was, uh, I really appreciated this online. It was great. So, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Thanks, Dave.
Okay. Consent items.
Now with that online construction map, you can see these approved plans. Uh, anyone can for developments that are coming in. So, uh, that's what we post is the ones that are approved. Uh, the first, the, I think it's the only item on the consent items is, uh, on four hundred North, there right under US six, uh, we have a project that's going on that will, uh, construct a sidewalk uh, for children to walk on and, and other people. But mostly for the school traffic that, that we are seeing lately. Um, and this item is to obtain a little bit more right-of-way from this property owner uh, so that that can be constructed. Uh, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll have another one on, on this property. So, uh, any questions about that?
I have a quick question. When I looked at this today, and, and this is great timing by the city, by the way. When you think about where Brandon and I live on the, on this side in these neighborhoods where Center Street's gonna be closed down for reconstruction. And so this, uh, you know, is going to be used that much more heavily for people to get from one side to the other, uh, to downtown from our, our neighborhoods. And there's only the sidewalk on that, on that side. And now there will be a sidewalk on this side. So, good timing and good planning by the city here. My only question is, I drove by it and looked at it, was if we're gonna construct this, is there a plan? This looks like about the only piece around this area that I don't see a sidewalk. And if the neighbor's already working with this, uh, for the sidewalk here, is there a reason why we wouldn't be looking at pouring the sidewalk there at the same time on a thousand east?
The, the money that we're using is Safe Sidewalk Grant, so it needs to be along a, a UDOT road. Fourth North is a UDOT road. This isn't. We, we have worked to try to get sidewalks in gaps like this, uh, in the city. We have an, an ongoing policy that we have that if residents that are on an internal lot will pay half the cost of a sidewalk and curb and gutter, then the city will pay the other half of the cost and we'll, we'll bid it out and get it all done. Uh, if you're on a corner lot, then we actually pay seventy-five percent of the cost because they have twice as much frontage. So, uh, that, that program's always available to these residents if, if, uh, they want to participate on getting that done. And then, uh, we are in the process of applying for another Safe Sidewalk Grant. But we're focusing on, on these type of projects more kind of in the northeast part of town. A big chunk of them around, uh, uh, the, uh, the Cafe Rio, Eighth North, Eighth East. So, uh, right now, there's no plans here. But once in a while, we'll go out and we'll try.
If we knew a decent concrete contractor, you know, he'd probably say that once you get them concrete there, you know, that you could, uh,
We, and we, we could do that, um.
There is one.
There isn't a decent.
You'll have to go to the coffee shop.
And draw it up.
Draw it up.
And the term to do that would probably be when it's under construction. And it'd have to be totally separate from the, the.
You'd have to try to line up the funds, right?
Um, and we would provide the funds as long as these residents would be willing to, to, uh, any up the quarter of the cost and half the cost there. So...
Good.
Okay. That's it.
Motion to approve the consent items.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon.
Second.
Second by Councilman Mendenhall. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed? Okay. New business. Ordinance sixteen fifteen, amending the business license.
Thank you, Mayor. Our last meeting, we presented this, excuse me, this ordinance to the council. They opted to continue so they could look at red lines. I understand that, uh, Mr. Anderson's got the red lines to each of you and you've had the opportunity to review those. Because we reviewed this in quite a bit of detail last time, I'm gonna go through this very quickly. So, if you have questions, let's stop and talk about them. But basically, we're looking for a way to allow our itinerant merchants to operate during fiestas and still protect our vendors who pay a, you know, a pricey sum to, to have prime locations during the fiestas. We think this ordinance will accomplish that. We've, uh, taken our home occupation for childcare and used the state definitions and tied into the state regulations. So, they have to have a state license and then, uh, you know, get a city license. We'll, we'll issue the city license first so the state can proceed. And then, but we'll do it with a condition. And lastly, uh, as you know, our downtown merchants have come to us and asked about allowing food vendor trucks on public streets. Herefore, we've allowed them only on private properties.
I believe that scout left his stuff underneath there. And there, yeah, go on. Forget that. Sorry.
Another one there on the end. Is that? Oh, that's his. Okay.
Sorry, Junior. No, that's okay.
Start over, Junior.
So, this allows, this allows food vendors to be on public properties by Main Street between Fourth South and, uh, Fourth North, between First East and Second East, so long as the food serving windows face away from the street. So, that's, that's what this accomplishes. We think it will accomplish our goals. We recommend approval.
Any discussion, comments? You know, we talked about before.
Feel good about it?
I just, oh, sorry. Ju- just one clarification that this does change is, and I know Lori, some of the meetings, not everyone goes to the, you know, the different workshops and stuff. But up to this point, you could get a city business license as a child, you know, as a childcare provider and not have a state license. The changes require all childcare to have a state license, which means they'll have to go through and get fire inspection, things like that. And so for some, it, this is gonna be more restrictive. They are gonna have to comply with state, which actually is a very good thing, quite, quite frankly, I think. Um, because they'll have to follow state requirements for, for safety of the children, fire code, different things like that. Um, but just so you gentlemen are aware, uh, if, if there is any fallout that I can see, it would be those providers that are used to only having a city license. There are some, quite frankly, that I'm sure probably don't even have any license. But if they come asking for a city license, they can no longer get it. They must be in compliance with state. They have to have a state license. So, it makes it a little more difficult for those. But, uh, that's the only fallout that I can see, um, that might possibly come is the additional requirement now that's there, which I think is a good thing for the, for the children.
Some, some would be exempt?
Yes.
With the state? And they can get exemptions?
Right. They can, they would qualify for those exemptions, sure. So, that's the only thing I see.
Okay. Great.
I think we said it publicly, but just to thank Lori again for her and her group getting involved and, uh, you know, seeing an issue that, uh, that the city could, uh, what, become, uh, you know, more compliant, I guess, in, in some way to your business. And, uh, and, um, I think, uh, both of these changes in Title V are great examples of how, uh, businesses can work with a city effectively and, uh, and again, be solution-oriented rather than, uh, problem-focused and how do, how do we get through a solution? I think both of these are great solutions for, for home daycare providers and also for the itinerant merchants that, uh, that are gonna be... Maybe you can park a food truck a- at your daycare now and just hit both at the same time or something. No, no problem. So, I think a success story, Mayor, here of getting some changes made uh, for, uh, for business downtown and for our home daycare providers that do so much in our community for those that, that need your services. So...
Great. With that, I'd entertain a motion.
I move that we approve ordinance number sixteen dash fifteen, amending business license requirements for itinerant merchants and childcare home occupations and allowing for more mobile food vendor locations.
A motion by Councilman Scobes, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. Uh, since this is an ordinance, it'll be a roll call vote. Councilman Dart?
Aye.
Councilman Davis?
Aye.
Councilman Gordon?
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall?
Aye.
Councilman Scobes?
Aye.
That passes. Okay. Nelson Annex, consideration for further study.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna start by describing the property that we're talking about. Then I'll talk about the process and we can go from there. So, this can be a little bit confusing. North is to, to my left, that way. This is, that might be better. Yeah, thank you. So, the property that we're talking about is out.
So the property that we're talking about is outlined in red right here. It's just about forty acres. This is Maple Mountain High School here. It's about a half a mile west of the subject property. It's twenty-five fifty east, US Highway six. Mapleton's over here. You'll remember likely that recently, these lands here were annexed into Spanish Fork City. At least the majority of that was with the Stillman annexation. In fact, we just received notice today from the Lieutenant Governor's Office that that's been finalized and recorded with them, so. The process works simply that when people want to have property annexed into or brought into Spanish Fork City, they make application. They use the system that we just talked about to do that, and that's what's happened here. A representative of property owners has applied to have this forty acres annexed into Spanish Fork. So when that happens, again, it's Kim who happens to be with us here tonight. She looks through that annexation application to make sure that certain criteria are met and that it's complete, and once that happens, our Development Review Committee takes a look at it. And in fact, we've done that with this proposal. The Development Review Committee looked at this a couple of weeks ago, and we've recommended that the annexation be accepted for further study. So that's the next step, accepting an annexation for further study, which simply means that you, as a city council, if you were to choose to do that, were telling the world and city staff that you thought this was an idea that's worth taking a look at. So tonight, in fact, we're asking you to either accept this for further study or not. That's the action that's on your agenda now. Should you accept it for further study, then there are some things that we as staff do by way of notifying certain entities in the area, adjacent communities like Mapleton and others, just to simply say, we're considering the annexation of these, in this case, forty acres. And these different affected entities are given an opportunity to share their thoughts or even to protest if they have a concern with the annexation. Now let's just say that we go through a period of time after it's been accepted by you, and there are no protests, no problems with it or anything like that, then the next step for the annexation is that it would go to the Planning Commission for two purposes. Number one, we ask the Planning Commission for a recommendation as to whether or not the land should be annexed. Pretty fundamental. Thumbs up or thumbs down on the idea of simply bringing it into Spanish Fork. And particularly if the recommendation is go for it, annex the land, then the Planning Commission would make a recommendation on zoning that would be assigned when the property's annexed. And once they're done, this would come back to you as the city council. Usually takes two or four months from the time that an annexation's accepted for further study to when it comes back for you to make a final decision as to whether or not the property should be annexed or not. And if, kind of like with the Planning Commission and their recommendation, you decide that it should be annexed, then also we look for you to tell us what zone the property should be in. When we talk about zones, I mean land use zones, whether, for example, single-family homes should be allowed there or commercial uses. In this case, we're talking about single-family homes. So that's where we're at. The DRC's recommended that the annexation be accepted for further study. That doesn't obligate the city council at the end of a review period to approve it. It simply gives us a chance to go through a formal study process, and we'd like you tonight to tell us what you want done.
Thanks, Dave. Any questions?
That's within our declared boundary, isn't it?
Great question. Yeah, we have an annexation policy that goes up to railroad tracks, which are right here, and this would take us all the way over to those gaps. One thing that we want to make sure we do with this is make sure our boundary matches Mapleton's the right way. We do not anticipate annexing lands on the other side of the railroad tracks. That's in Mapleton's annexation policy, so we'd abut them right there.
Good. It's not Mapleton yet? It's still county land or?
I think Mapleton has annexed that far over. I'm not certain about that, but I think they've come over to the tracks. Yeah, it looks like there's been some development in Mapleton.
Great. Okay, I'd entertain a motion.
Well, I'd move we approve the Nelson Annexation Consideration for Further Study.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Dart, a second by Councilman Scobes. All in favor, whoops, yeah, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. We'll move on. Resolution fifteen seventeen, amending fees for providing records.
Thank you, Mayor. We recently received a large GRMA request, GRMA being the Government Records Access and Management Act. It took a lot of time for us to pull the records and send them off. So we did that, we realized that our ordinance has a dollar figure in it based on one of our clerk positions to pull that. Part of the challenge is, you know, sometimes you need somebody other than a clerk who can pull the records, know where to look and can grab them. Over time, wages increase usually, occasionally they drop a little bit. What we thought would be better is if we mirrored the state language, which wasn't in place when we initially adopted our ordinance. Our ordinance allows us to do this by resolution, which is why you have a resolution in front of you, but the state law says that the wages plus benefits of the lowest paid employee qualified to do the search is what you can charge. So we're recommending we adopt that in our resolution, make that the standard, that makes us, we don't have to come back and change the dollar number as that changes. The other thing we have is cost for copies, if anybody wants hard copies. Usually they want electronic anymore, so that doesn't come into play. That's always been ten cents. We'll leave it that way. Certified copies, occasionally you need that, two dollars per page, that's a little different. It's been a dollar, so we're changing that some and then make the fees effective immediately. Questions? Thank you.
All right, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve Resolution number fifteen dash seventeen, amending fees for providing records.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Gordon, a second by Councilman Mendenhall. Since this is a resolution, we'll do this on a roll call vote. Councilman Scobes.
Aye.
Councilman Mendenhall.
Aye.
Councilman Gordon.
Aye.
Councilman Davis.
Aye.
Councilman Dart.
Aye.
That passes. Okay, Rod.
All right. I would move we go into closed session to discuss a reasonably imminent litigation and a land transaction.
Second.
Got a motion by Councilman Dart, a second by Councilman Davis. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We're done. Thank you for everyone being here.